City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joyner.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Bowen.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you so much. Would you please join the sitting council and me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I recognize our sergeant in arms tonight, Lieutenant Vernon Q. Thank you, Lieutenant, for being with us tonight. And our fire marshal tonight is Bradley Watson. Fire marshal was here keeping us safe. We do have the city manager's update now. I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Peyton.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of different things tonight, but first I'm going to call on Forsyth County Deputy County Manager Denise Price, who's here today to share us a little bit of information because there's a lot of publicity on the federal shutdown and how that's impacting food services in our area, including those folks that are getting SNAP benefits. And so she's been providing information to the county as a whole, but we agree to come and provide it to you as well and to your audience.
Welcome, Ms. Price. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. It's my pleasure to be here to give you some updates. I preface each of these updates with this is true as of I know it at this very moment. The chances that something will change while we're speaking is very likely. So I'm going to give you some places that you can go to get updated information in pretty much real time as well before we close. So there's two potential impacts that I want to focus on tonight. Both are USDA-funded programs. One is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, commonly referred to as FoodStamps. And the other is the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, commonly referred to as WIC. So both of these programs provide food and nutrition. In Forsyth County, there's about 57,000 individuals enrolled in SNAP benefits. This is valued of nutrition that goes into our community of about $10.3 million a month. So it is a lot of people who rely on this program for food. Benefits are issued on a rolling basis, which means that some people got their benefits toward the beginning of October, some people got it toward the end of October. November benefits have not been loaded at this point. The USDA notified us last week that there was not sufficient funds for November benefits and not to send in our enrollments to get those benefits added to the EBT cards or the transfer cards. Over the weekend, late last week, we had two federal judges who ordered the administration to release contingency funding for SNAP. I will tell you that this is one of the areas we have an update, so I'm going to look down as opposed to reading from my slides. We are still awaiting input as to how to proceed. So that's the most important thing to hear. News outlets, which we know we have to vet, but they are reporting that there will be reduced benefits for those enrolled, and that's those that were enrolled before November. USAID contingency funds, there's about $5 billion of those nationally. It costs the program about $8 billion to operate. So the math doesn't exactly math. We suspect that there is going to be a reduced benefit. We've also been hearing that November, individuals that were approved in November will not get benefits in November. All to be determined, and we will post as soon as we have an official word on how this is going to roll out. Social Services does continue receiving applications. They are processing them and recertifications as well. So even if benefits are paused or end, we encourage people to continue with that process so that when funding is restored, there is no lapse in them getting their benefits. WIC is also USDA-funded. It is a grant-funded program. With SNAP as an entitlement program, so a little bit of difference there. We've not yet received FY26 funds, but we have been getting like every two weeks approval that funding has been received and we're going to continue to provide those services here in North Carolina. As of the end of August, we're serving over 10,000 individuals in the WIC program. About 1,900 of those are infants, and that infuses about $9 million into our community each year. Local health departments were informed that benefits would continue from November the 1st to November the 15th. And again, hot off the presses, we have just been informed that benefits will continue through November the 30th. As our WIC director says, we'll take this two weeks at a time, and that's how we have to take it. Funding for WIC, once it ends, we cannot do anything, so we will not continue to receive applications and such. There's a couple other programs that I just want to make you aware of. The Low Income Energy Assistance Program, or LEAP. We have carryover funds that is funding that now for our auto LEAP applicants. We are not able to fund new applicants at this point, but what we are hopeful of is that the shutdown will end by November, and we'll see kind of seamless continuation of that program, as we don't usually start applications until December. Medicaid, we are told there is federal funding to support that through the end of the first quarter, which would end in December, and also to continue the federal marketplace activities. Temporary Assistance for Needed Families, or TANF, that also is funded through, was funded in October and is funded through November. We're monitoring closely for what happens beyond that. So some action items, we are meeting with all of our food and nutrition partners on a weekly basis to prepare, to be as ready as we can to get people directed to resources in the community, and that includes some of your staff that's there as well. We've also at the county launched a webpage that is dedicated to updates. It's a great place for you to get information as well, and I'm happy to send to you that link, or you can simply search Forsyth County Shutdown Updates, and it'll pop up for you. Partners are preparing for potential impacts. For example, Second Harvest Food Bank has purchased us another half a million dollars' worth of food to have on hand. A media conference was held last Wednesday. We continue to engage our media partners as well, giving them factual information to share. Several activities are occurring around WIC formulas. I mentioned that there's 1,900 infants. Some of those receive specialty prescription formulas. So you'll see that we have got the most amazing group of providers and supports in our community. When there's a crisis and there's an emergency, they come to the table, and they are. So we are very, very positive that we're going to be able to continue to connect people to those formula resources. Many of our local food pantries and meals definitely would like to have more food and donations. So if you encounter folks who want to help, please know that most are accepting donations. I do hear frequently that people prefer cash, and that's for several reasons. One is many of our food banks have smaller footprints, and they don't have large spaces to store food. It also allows them to take their dollars and combine them so that they can buy in bulk and actually get a lower purchasing price. And then it also allows them to focus on what's most needed by the community. They also need volunteers. So what I encourage people to do is to call. There's not a one place that's the best place to call. It's whatever is important to that person, right? And as many food banks as there are are reasons that people feel called to support that person. Some merchants are also rounding up now. Went to the grocery store this weekend myself, and they asked me if I wanted to round up. So there's lots of ways that people can contribute. For those that are seeking resources, probably the most important slide we'll cover tonight. Again, check out our website. There's a place where you can go to four links. Those four links have very exhaustive resources and contact information. We again encourage people to call before going. Things may change rapidly, and we don't want people making unnecessary trips. Check out the Forsyth County Facebook page. We update there as well. That's probably more real time than our website, but they're very close. If receiving a benefit that has not ended, again, comply with your recertifications, because we don't want there to be a lapse. Respond to recertification requests very timely. And if interested in receiving benefits and not currently, apply. Again, we want to get you in queue so that if funding is restored, that we can continue. I threw out a whole lot of information there fast. Pat, I hope I made you proud. I heard five minutes, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. It's certainly a difficult time for all of our citizens here, so thank you for everything the county is doing to try to make this issue possible.
You have a great night.
Thank you, Scott.
We thank Denise for coming over. She has her own meetings to attend, and so this was just an extra added meeting for tonight. I also will mention that on our website, we also have a food resource section on where to access food or meals during the shutdown. So the county site has part of that probably referred to the county site, but we do, if somebody ends up on the city site, there is a resource there page that helps you get those resources as well. Couple of other items. One is Leaf Collection began today. The sanitation department will run three cycles of collections between now and January. Residents may go to our website at Leaf Routes or call City Link to get updated information on where the leaf trucks are currently serving, so you can find out how close they are to your neighborhood. It also provides information on the actual leaf collection service trucks. Another component of this, residents are encouraged to consider participating in the Office of Sustainability's Leave the Leaves program. So instead of raking leaves to the curb, residents can take a pledge to rake their leaves to a section of the yard to let them break down naturally. By doing so, this creates much-needed habitats for insects such as fireflies to germinate their eggs. Residents can learn more and fill out the pledge on the city's website or by calling City Link 311 as well. As we reported a couple of times, the two-way conversion of Liberty and Main Street is continuing. Unfortunately, there was a lot of rain, fortunately or unfortunately, last week, so the weather delayed the timing of the full opening. Currently, the southernmost section of the project, Academy to Cemetery Streets, and the northernmost section, Sixth Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, are open to two-way traffic. And then while we're currently working on the fire compensation and benefits study and our field worker CDL drivers, our human resources department is also in the process of selecting a vendor to conduct the market compensation and benefits study, what we're calling our three-year study. This is a study that will be done in three phases over the next three years, so that all city employees will be reviewed in terms of their pay and benefits and their classifications during this timeframe. A couple of events. On November 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30, the MWE Division of the Economic Development Department is offering a mixer event for MWE businesses to help showcase their services and products, and for them to learn about opportunities to provide their services and products to city departments, county departments, local contractors, and local consultants. Residents can learn more on our website or again by calling City Link. The event will be held at the Benton Convention Center. Again, that is coming up on the 4th from 5:30 to 7:30. The Winston-Salem Police Department will be at the Starbucks on Robin Hood Road on Thursday, November 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. So you can stop by and speak to some of our dedicated officers there and have coffee with a cop. Another opportunity to meet with city staff and have a cup of coffee will be on Thursday, November 13th, from 10 to 2 at the Carl Russell Community Center located on Carver School Road. The Human Relations Department is hosting the event, intended for residents to learn more about our city departments and programs. County and community partners will also be on site. And then just as a reminder, because before our next meeting, the city offices will be closed on Veterans Day, November 11th, and following that, on Thanksgiving holiday, November 27th and 28th. Solid Waste Collections will be affected, so we encourage folks to download the Winston-Salem Collects app to keep track of the changes. And again, they can go to our website or by calling City Link 311 if they've got questions. And then just a couple of quick recognitions. Keith Finch, our Director of Vegetation Management, won the annual Glenda Keels Award at the Winston-Salem Partnership Annual Meeting in October. The award goes to a city employee in recognition of their dedication, commitment, and service to downtown Winston-Salem. Also, congratulations to Kelly Garvin from DOT, who manages our transit system, among our other duties, and Andy Sabatz from Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful for being two of the Greater Winston-Salem Inc.'s Winston Under 40 Leadership Award winners. And with that, Mayor, I'll stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Peyton? Thank you. Covered it well, Mr. Peyton. Do have an honorary. May I have H1, please?
Item H1, resolution honoring the 2025 City of Winston-Salem University graduates. Whereas 19 city residents successfully completed the City of Winston-Salem University, Shirley Abdullah, Kalina Wantu, Russell DeBois, Lynn Felder, Janet Frazier, Zendia Gonzalez, Keisha Horton, Anna Howard Craven, Jonathan Capell, Joanna Kelly, Titus Lee, Veronica Smith, Richard Sebastian, Alexandria Shaw, Dr. Marcia Smith, Shannon Stokes, LaKeisha Varn, Carrie Wiggins, and Ashley Wilcox. And whereas the course is intended to provide residents with a deeper understanding of the inner workings of city government, and whereas the course has included over 30 hours covering 20 city departments and divisions, completing a ride-along with the Winston-Salem Police Department or the Winston-Salem Fire Department, attending a city council or committee meeting, and completing one of the following: shadowing a City Link agent, a historic downtown walking tour, a tour of the Archie Elidge Wastewater Treatment Plant, a recycling tour of the Materials Recovery Facility, or a bus tour of bond projects, and completing a budget project. And whereas their dedication has resulted in a better understanding and appreciation of city government, and has given them the resources to serve their community better, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Winston-Salem City Council hereby approve honoring the 2025 City of Winston-Salem University graduates and wish them much success with their future as community leaders.
Is there a motion?
I move second.
Motion second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose? If not, any, that's unanimous. Thank you. Stand Mr. John Capell is going to bring comments on behalf of the class. John?
I was told I only had 30 minutes. Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, members of city council. First and foremost, thank you for this amazing opportunity. Out of over 70 submissions, this meager group was selected, of which we have gladly participated. And we had an honorary joiner. That would be Councilmember Cipio, so thank you for joining us. It's always a pleasure to sit beside her and hear all the comments she makes, but she says, "I'm not going to say anything." You, Member Cipio. So throughout the 12-week course, we were very highly engaged, learning about what the city is and does. We learned what starts a fire and who stops the fires. We learned about crime in the city and who protects us from that crime. We learned what happens when things go left with emergency management, and then we learned how to get back on our feet, and we learned how we benefit from clean drinking water every single day. We learned that how what we plan gets built, and then we had to learn how to drive around it. We saw wastewater treatment plants. We learned how we reduce, reuse, and recycle. We learned about bond tours with the lyrical stylings of Ben Ro. Give the man a mic, and he has fun. We got to ride along with police department. We got to ride along with the fire department. We got to shadow the amazingly talented and dedicated individuals that staff the City Link departments. Those folks need a raise. I am going to give a shameless plug because I have the mic, and I'm going to tell you that the three best programs that are sponsored by the City of Winston-Salem that are completely free but worth every bit of the city budget is the Citizens Fire Department Academy, the Citizens Police Academy, and the City of Winston-Salem University. And to my fellow citizens, if you have not engaged in those, I encourage you to do so. All of us are going to take what we learned, and we're going to make the city a better place. We want to say thank you specifically to Katie Gore, Susan Spainhour, and Deb Clark. They had the distinct pleasure of spending every Thursday with us for three whole hours. There were countless others that lent the assistance to make this happen, and for that, we thank you, and we look forward to being future leaders ourselves in our own city. So again, thank you for this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, John. I met with the group earlier and thanked them on behalf of the city and the city council for their participation and hard work. They've done this, and challenged them then to take the word back out to the community. Thank you again. Congratulations. This meeting is being televised tonight on the city's YouTube page as well as TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. And as you know, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the watch meetings online option. Of course, our agenda tonight is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. It's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda first. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee on the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed will be enacted with one motion. Council members, are there any items you wish to pull tonight? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And the consent agenda is approved. We'll now move to the general agenda, which concludes the public hearing for a petition to close and abandon an alleyway. There's a resolution for the National League of Cities Conference, as well as seven resolutions for affordable housing development cycle two. When this public hearing is called, anyone in the council chamber who wishes to speak on this item will be given an opportunity. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. May we have item C1, please?
Item G1, public hearing and consideration of a petition to close and abandon a portion of a 10-foot alleyway off Polo Road located in the north ward.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. This did come from our Public Works Committee, and I recognize the chairman, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of agenda item G1.
Second. Second by Councilmember Andrew Bowen. Any discussion? We're going to try to vote electronically, so all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you all. Item G2, please.
Item G2, adoption of a resolution regarding the National League of Cities 2025 Annual Conference.
This is a motion that will appoint Councilmember Cipio as our official vote-maker at the conference, and Councilmember Hall, I believe, is attending this meeting as well. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I move for approval of agenda item G2.
Second. Second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. I mean, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you all. Good luck, Councilmember Cipio. I know you'll vote appropriately. Item G3.
Item G3, resolution authorizing the conditional conveyance of one city-owned lot for the development of 42 units of single-family affordable rental housing.
We've been informed by the developer, the Vizino Group, that they wish to withdraw their proposal for this housing development, so we'll certainly allow that to happen, and we hope they'll consider future projects in our city. Item G4, please.
Item G4, resolution authorizing the conditional sale of one city-owned lot for the development of 84 units of affordable rental housing to the Affordable Housing Management, Inc., located in the southeast ward.
I recognize the chairman of our Housing General Government Committee, Mayor Protem Adams.
I move for approval of agenda item G4.
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. I recognize Councilmember Taylor for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I would move to deny item G4 and bring the Prosperity Alliance project back for reconsideration at the November 17 city council meeting.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Mr. McLamb, you want to comment on that? Councilmember Taylor's motion?
I'm here just to answer any questions you all may have about the projects.
How many units in that?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Townhomes, forty-seven.
Right. The motion is to deny the items as on the agenda and to bring the, I guess, the second place finisher in that back to our meeting on the 17th. Is that correct?
Comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just want to say to the developer, thank you for bringing your project, your time and your effort to the city. It didn't quite work out on this particular parcel of land, but there are other parcels in the southeast ward that I'm willing to work with you on. So I don't want you to think that we don't want your business here, and we don't appreciate your effort, because we do. Affordable housing is something that we do need to have in our community, and I'm willing to work with you on another parcel on that. So I apologize for where we are today, but the neighbors have spoken. They were loud and clear. We wanted to show them the respect that they deserve in their community, but I'm willing to work with you going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. This is a substitute motion. Sorry.
The wording is inappropriate, but we're voting on the substitute.
Voting on the substitute. Yeah. Well, the motion is to deny G4 and then bring back an item for reconsideration on the 17th, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Item G5?
Item G5, resolution authorizing the sale of eight city-owned lots for the development of eight single-family affordable homes by Prosperity Alliance.
Recognize, Mayor Protem Adams.
I move for approval of agenda item G5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cipio and Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That is unanimous. Item G6?
Item G6, resolution authorizing the sale of one city-owned lot for the development of 33 single-family affordable townhomes to Prosperity Alliance in the southeast ward.
Recognize, Mayor Protem Adams.
I move for approval of agenda item G6.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item G7?
Item G7, resolution authorizing the sale of 12 city-owned lots and $525,000 in gap financing for the development of 15 single-family affordable homes to the Moravian Church in America Southern Province.
Recognize, Mayor Protem Adams.
I move for approval of agenda item G7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Andrew Bowen. Let me recognize Councilmember Hall, who I believe wishes to make a comment on this item.
Adu. Thank you, Mayor Joins. This particular item has several lots that are in it. While I'm, you know, ultimately in favor of most of them, I did get to hear back from some residents about some of the concerns that they have for the lots that are on West 17th Street, on North Cherry Street, and also on Pittsburgh Avenue. And the concern pretty much was that they had not heard from the developer particularly about how the architectural design would be fit into the neighborhood and that it would be different than the fit and look of the community currently. And then also, there was a piece that I think is just ultimately overarching, which goes to talk about what that kind of feedback loop looks like in residents being able, and just community in general, in being able to actually voice those concerns before it actually gets to us as a governing body, before even committing, and definitely even before us voting, particularly at a city council meeting. And so that is something that in the future I would like for us to try to tweak and work out, understanding obviously that can't be worked out tonight. But because of that, I will be voting no on this, but otherwise generally supportive of what is trying to be done. But because I did hear that, I will be voting no on this particular item. But because I did hear that, I will be voting no on this particular item.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Prostham?
Yes. The ward is the North Ward, and I just want everyone to know that we mentioned last month at General Government Committee meeting that the staff will reactivate, if it's not already activated, the Affordable Housing Coalition Committee so that citizens will be able to voice their concerns, much like the planning board and the zoning board, before it gets to General Government and council meeting. I'd also like to say that, as we've seen already in the past week or so, this housing plan process, again, is being, we're learning to fly the plane while we're flying it. Winston-Salem has never had a housing plan, and I don't care who tell you that they did. I know. In order for us to do this, again, Chantel Knows, Ms. McClain, and Assistant City Manager Angel Wright-Lenear, that we will be tweaking and bringing things back to General Government before the next round, such as the scoring process. I've gotten some comments, emails about it, that we need to look at it. The council needs to look at it. So you're going to have to educate and re-educate us on the scoring process and the concerns that have been raised. But we'll also look at what the Affordable Housing Coalition, what is it doing presently? And if it's not, then they need some training instructions as to what this needs to look like, because we're going to depend on them. And also, that whatever projects are coming down the pipeline, because I know you guys just didn't look at these a month ago or two months ago, and if it is, this has got to be further along. Ms. McClain, as you know, we've discussed, that now it's got to be put out into the atmosphere so communities see that it's coming. Maybe it's 20 developers' projects. I'd rather we put the projects and developers out there, and then by the time there's a, we need a timeline, adjust our timeline again, we're tweaking, that when it gets to Affordable Housing Coalition, that they now will already know what those 20 projects are and that the citizens had enough time to weigh in and have their voices heard for their community. I know this is again, but we knew this going into this, that we would probably tweak this plan at least for another year or two, and it'll be changing as the world changes to capital stacks and finances, North Carolina housing, and all of that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a motion to approve this item. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. An emotion passes, seven in favor, one opposed. Item G8.
Item G8, resolution authorizing the conveyance of one city-owned lot with existing structure and $35,000 in gap financing for the rehabilitation of one single-family affordable home by Whole Man Ministries.
Councilmember, Mayor Prostham Adams.
I move for approval of agenda item G8.
Second.
Motion is second. It's in the East Ward. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And then item G9.
Item G9, resolution authorizing the conveyance of three city-owned lots with existing structures and $105,000 in gap financing for rehabilitation of three single-family affordable rental homes to Bell's Property Management in the East and Northeast Wards.
Recognize, Mayor Prostham Adams.
I move for approval of agenda item G9.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cipio. Further discussion, questions? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Mr. McClam, thank you for your staff and your hard work.
Thank you all. All of the recommendations are excellent recommendations that we will take into account. Affordable Housing Coalition, it is active, so we just need to start making those meetings public and giving the community an opportunity to speak out before it gets to the General Government Committee.
Well, I certainly, I for one, am very grateful for the units that we approved tonight. We need every one of them and many, many more. So thank you for your hard work. Councilmember Cipio?
Yes. I just have a question for Ms. McClain.
Yes.
We have this, put in this, this is our round two of our housing program. Some in the first round did not get those Lytec credits, and what is the status at this time for those that we did approve? What is the next step?
So those that, you correct, we had three projects that we brought for approval. Only one of those projects, Tulip Commons, for how many units? It was roughly 60 units of multifamily complex for seniors, and so that $1.9 million that you all approved will move forward. The balance of that $4 million that we had for the Lytec cycle would go, would just move back to the next cycle, so now we have roughly about $6.1 million for the next Lytec cycle of projects to be approved. All of the single-family lots, you all approved, so as we speak, they are executing contracts, moving dirt, so hopefully we'll see some single-family pop up. There was some money that was left over from that cycle as well. We entered this cycle with $1.2 million, but after approval tonight, we're only spending about $665,000, $665,000, so there'll be another $615,000 that can move forward to the next cycle. So we still got some funding. We still have the ability to bring some affordable housing, so hopefully the next cycle, we'll see some projects get that Lytec funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
Yep. This is under the comments of tweaking for next time. I think it would be helpful that you talk to the council person of whatever ward the land is in and get their feedback initially on what they would or would not like, particularly if it is property that would require rezoning. Some of the issues tonight was, what you proposed was a rental property they would prefer to have owner-occupied apartments versus townhomes, et cetera, et cetera. I would not, at that point, want to get tied up in the intricacies of the specific proposals, but I think a quick answer is, do you want apartments or townhomes or single-family on that land? Would go a long ways in being sure that, once we start it, we can finish it. And as you saw tonight, we had two that were sent back.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Mayor Prostham?
Thank you, Mayor. And to build on what Councilmember Clark is, as city attorney, it would be also great for you to bring us up to speed on what has been approved in Raleigh as to what our influential powers are as council members when it comes to development, because it has changed. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McClam.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, following our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Councilmember Joyner and Councilmember Clark seconded. All those in favor adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. We are adjourned.[1769.41]